Welcome to the City Council Work Session in the interview for the THPRD Recreation Facility. This is our second work session where we're interviewing the three RFPs to operate the Sherwood Recreation Facility. I want to thank you for being here, and I would like to remind the audience that this is just a work session, so we are gathering information as city councilors. A lot of information comes at us, and we have to have work sessions to get it all in and be able to make educated decisions. There is no public comment during this particular meeting. Work sessions are just for us to gather information and pick their brains. And so if you do have public comment, you are always welcome to submit that via email, online to any of the councilors, all of the councilors, any staff member that you want to. It is part of public record. It can be one page, it can be 10 pages. So you can speak to your heart's content via the written word if you have things you'd like to say. And then anytime we have an actual city council meeting that is not a work session, there's always a public comment time, and you're welcome to join us for one of those. And without further ado, I would like to welcome you to the City of Sherwood, and thank you for providing an RFP. It was a really, really well-done RFP, and I think it showed that you spent a lot of time and that you were passionate about what you were doing. So I just want to thank you for putting hard work into it, and I'm going to let you guys take over.
Well, I am Aisha Panis. I'm the Director of Park and Recreation Services for Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District, and I'm joined tonight with myself here. Is...
Hi!
No problem. I come with my own musical. I'm joined tonight with Deb Schoen, who is our Superintendent of Community Programs, and Keith Hobson, who is our Director of Business and Facilities. So the three of us, along with three other staff members, put together this RFP that we're going to be talking with you about. But I would like to just start with a little bit more about Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District. You may be aware that we are a provider of Park and Recreation District services to the greater Beaverton area. So Beaverton is about 90-ish thousand people, under 100,000. Our actual service district is much larger, and we have, long-term, been their provider. We were established in 1955, so we're celebrating our 62nd year. But we operate under an elected board, much like yourselves, and we're guided by a number of policy statements, and so we wanted to share those with you here. Our mission statement: We're in the business of providing high-quality park and recreation facilities and also preserving natural areas that meet the needs of our diverse community. And so we do this while connecting people, parks, and nature. And we have a more recent statement that talks about our diversity and inclusion efforts and how we really do focus on breaking down barriers to participation and pulling people in to give them opportunities to participate with us. So just a little bit more about our organization. As I mentioned, we were established in 1955. We cover about 50 square miles and serve over 240,000 people in that greater Beaverton area. We have a number of active parks. We also have more passive recreation areas, or natural areas, and wetlands and forests. We do operate a few skate parks. We have two large nature parks. One is the Cooper Mountain Nature Park on the top of Cooper Mountain. We also operate the Tuolton Hills Nature Park in more central Beaverton. We have a few dog parks. We have about 2,500 acres of park land. And we also have a couple of lakes and streams that we monitor, and then community gardens are a pretty big thing for us as well.
Is that 12? Is that correct?
12 community gardens, yes. In terms of the facilities that we currently operate, we have a 55 and better facility called Elsie Stour, and we also have other recreation centers, more full-service. We have one rec aquatic that is similar to the Sherwood Recreation Center. We have other recreation-only, no-pool facilities, and then we do have standalone pools. So we have six indoor and two outdoor pools, and as you can imagine with this lovely weather we've been having, these are busy places for us right now. And in addition to that, one of our indoor facilities is also our admin facility where we all work on 158th and Walker. So that's a 92-acre recreation complex where we have a 50-meter pool, we have a tennis center, outdoor tennis, we have an athletic center, and our admin offices. In terms of our outdoor facilities, we operate over 100 tennis courts. We have baseball and softball fields throughout the district. And then within parks, we have a lot of sport courts, basketball, and we're looking at other options like footsall and pickleball, and so we're always open to looking at new things there. We also have some volleyball courts and volleyball at one of our parks as well. And in terms of our community focus, we have a lot of different areas that we spend some time and resources in, and one of those is adaptive sports and facilities. We also work hard to draw in our diverse staff so that we can be more representative of our district within the Beaverton School District, which is largely a similar boundary with our own. Over 90 different languages are spoken, so we work all the time to be able to accommodate and encourage more folks that may not traditionally participate with us to come and take part in our activities. We also have a lot of work we do in terms of public engagement, so we work on events during the summer particularly, where we're doing concerts in the parks. We have our upcoming party in the park in about a week-and-a-half's time. It's a free event, several hours. People get to see demonstrations of different activities they can participate in and get to actually have fun. We're actually having a silent disco this year, which you put on a little set of headsets and just dance around to DJ music. So we're pretty excited about that. And I think we are going to turn this now over to Keith, who's going to talk a little bit more about our internal staffing.
Great. Thank you, Aisha. Well, we're very fortunate to have a very seasoned and stable management team at the district. Our general manager, Doug Menke, has been in his current role since 2006, and he's actually been with the district since 1984. I've been in my role as the Director of Business and Facilities since 2007, and I've been with the district since 2000. Bob Wade, our Director of Communications and Outreach, has been with the district since 2007, and Joff Roach, our Director of Community Partnerships, joined the district in 2013. Aisha has been in her role as the Director of Park and Recreation Services since 2015, but she's been with the district since 2013 as well. In addition to our very stable management team, we have an outstanding staff, consists of 180 full-time staff and 23 regular part-time staff. Those are staff that work between 30 and 35 hours a week on a year-round basis. The largest group of our employees is our part-time or seasonal staff. Depending on the time of year, this group ranges from 600 to 900, and this includes our class instructors, lifeguards, seasonal maintenance staff, any number of activities that those staff could do for us. On a full-time equivalent basis, our part-time staff equate to about 270 FTE. With a staff this large, we place a high emphasis on staff development. We currently have 19 of our staff that are certified park and recreational professionals through the National Recreation and Parks Association. We've also created an in-house think-tank for looking at emerging trends over the next 20 years. We call this our Future Trends Team, and we're very selective of how staff get assigned to this team, and we use this as a development activity for up-and-coming future leaders of the district as well. We actively participate in Leadership Beaverton, and we send two staff per year to that. And finally, we have an in-house Leadership Development Academy that was designed specifically to develop our staff to meet the needs of leadership succession planning. The academy's been very successful, not only in terms of the number of people that have gone through it. It's been in place since 2010, but also we've had a number of staff who've actually achieved leadership growth positions as a result of their participation, largely as a result of their participation in the academy. Shifting gears from people to money, we are an Oregon special service district, and as such, we're required to follow local budget law, just like any other city, county, school district, or other special district. The total budget for 2017 that was just recently adopted is approximately $100 million. Of that, about $48 million is our operating budget. The balance is in capital and debt service funds. The primary sources of revenue for our operations are program user fees. Those are about $12 million a year, district-wide, and our property taxes paid by district residents that are about another $30 million per year. One of the hallmarks of our budgeting process is ensuring that we're operating in a financially sustainable manner. This includes ensuring that we can meet capital replacement needs as they come due. Since 2005, we've maintained a 10-year forward-looking projection of replacement needs, and we make that a priority through our budgeting process to ensure that we are not developing a backlog of unfunded capital replacements. In 2013, just to build on that, the district adopted a Service and Financial Sustainability Plan, and one of the key recommendations of this plan is that we actually develop a capital replacement reserve fund and begin funding capital replacements as assets are being used up. This is a long-term project to fully fund this replacement reserve, but to date, we've been funding it for three years, and we have about $2.5 million in the replacement reserve. And this will be a key operating premise going forward for the district, is that we build replacement reserves for capital funding. THPRD was again honored in 2017 for the quality of our budgeting process. For the 13th consecutive year, we received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. This award reflects a commitment to the highest principles for budget transparency and communication with the public, so we're very proud of that. And with that, I will now turn it over to Deb to talk about the proposal.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to come in and talk about our proposal. I know you have that in front of you, so I'm going to talk a little bit at a higher level and just kind of the overarching themes of our proposal. It's based on maintaining the current level of community-based programming that we have at the facility currently. Our plan would be to work with the city staff and develop priorities and goals in the areas of program development, marketing, collaboration among staff and the community, and customer service. One of the cornerstones of our service delivery is making accommodations for qualifying low-income individuals, and we do that through our scholarship program, which is funded through our Park Foundation. However, Sherwood residents, we would have to come up with another way to fund this scholarship program. We would not be able to do that through the Tuolton Hills Park Foundation. We would coordinate directly with the city staff on the governance and how you wanted to see that, whether that was through advisory committees, monthly reports, regular staff meetings. We would want to discuss that if we move forward with this proposal, to see what the governance would look like, to make sure that we were both represented and carrying out our missions. The plan does indicate there would be a net loss based on our projections, and that would require the city to reimburse the district for any operating loss and capital. If we were to outperform our projections, of course, that would reduce the amount the city would be required to send to Tuolton Hills, and if we were to outperform even at a larger amount and there was a profit, we would want that to be split between the City of Sherwood and Tuolton Hills Park and Rec. And that would be a negotiated percentage. Just like to say that Tuolton Hills is a high-performing professional organization. We feel that we could bring a lot of experience and knowledge. I myself have worked in recreation programming for 35 years with the district and have been at a number of our recreation facilities, so we have a great deal of experience and expertise behind us. We would enjoy working with you. So that's the end of our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think I'll just turn it over to you guys if you have questions. I know there are some, so. Who wants to start us off? Don't everybody jump at once.
Yeah, I can certainly go ahead and just start with one question I have, just with regards to existing staff of the facility. You have on, it's page eight of the proposal, about kind of the recruitment process, and there is some, you know, a comment here about the majority of the recruitments are open to both external and internal candidates. Is that referring to just kind of your normal operating, how you hire today at your facilities? What would be your proposal for the existing facility and the existing staff that they have today? Would it be an interview process for all of the employees, some of the employees? Can you perhaps explain that a bit?
Looks like I'm going to take a shot at that. Almost all of our recruitments, even if they end up being internal candidate or open recruitments, just to ensure that we're getting the best person for the position. If we were successful in moving forward with this, these would essentially be new positions. We could look at whether there were staff interested in transfer opportunities. All of these positions, the beauty of it is it integrates with the structure that we already have. So we can see if there's transfer opportunities for existing staff who want to move over here. If there's not and new staff are required, then we would go through an open recruitment. It could come from outside, or it could come from existing staff who are ready for more opportunity, promotional opportunity. Does that answer your question?
It does, to some extent. I mean, would there be any consideration given to the existing staff in advance of opening it up to open recruitments? Where I'm going with this is, would there be any allowances for the existing staff to remain, should they choose to?
You know, I think the detailed terms of this are somewhat of a blank slate, and if that's a priority, then that's certainly something that could be considered.
Our staffing structure that we put in the proposal is different than the current staffing structure, so there wouldn't be exact positions for them just to transfer laterally into. Certainly, I would think that the staff that is involved would have a leg up on operation of the facility. That would be reflected in an interview process.
That leads me to my question, or one of them anyway. Have you had any situations where you've had transitioning, where you have taken over operations of a facility and had to transition before, or would this be a first?
I think it's fair to say this would be a first transitioning. We've opened new facilities as we've developed new centers and staffed them up, but this would be a first transitioning in an existing operation.
One question. Would the residents of Sherwood have access to using your other facilities? I know we do now as out-of-district. Would that change at all, or would it still be an out-of-district?
I think that plays into my question that I'll piggyback on, is the increase in membership fees, and that was one of the questions, is it because they're going to have the ability to have more access?
I think the short answer is no, they wouldn't, because the intention is, this is not an annexation proposal.
Right.
This is a management operational agreement of a facility. As such, Sherwood residents would not necessarily have full privileges of THPRD.
Because our taxes have not paid into the district or...
Right.
So it would be fairly isolated just to this facility.
So to that end, your proposal had a significant increase in membership fee compared to the other two. Is there a specific reason for that? And then to counter, that your revenue was significantly lower with a significantly higher membership fee, so can you kind of talk about that and how you came up with your numbers and...
And that was just based on our experience at our rec aquatic center, and it was to bring the membership fee up into the levels that we are currently charging at the park district in Beaverton. We also wanted to make certain that we were able to offer the same services by keeping the equipment updated and offering childcare with each pass. We did leave a lot of the classes, I believe, at the same fee, realizing that that, you know, that's going to be a change for people in the community, but that was based on our best information from our rec aquatic center.
So I might be a little bit confused. The people within your district, they become members and then they pay monthly? Is that how it works?
Residents of THPRD that are paying a tax amount, that goes to support certain facilities, base-level facilities. They do still pay to participate if they're signing their kids up for a class, or if they're taking a series of classes using our Deluxe Pass. They can buy a Deluxe Pass monthly, six months, a year. So they're still paying for classes in those events. Something like the Deluxe Pass does include childcare, but your model, I believe, here is a little bit different than how we've done that, so we've had to work that into the calculations.
So I have a question. If this facility is not within the district, then what would be the reason to bring up membership rates to keep them in align with all those facilities you're operating that are within district? What's the reasoning there, since it's sort of, they're disconnected that way?
And part of that was based on the programming levels, that we felt the city wouldn't want to absorb a larger subsidy to the district, so that we felt that we know that industry standard was higher than what was currently being charged. And that was to reduce the deficit and the subsidy the city would need to provide.
You're saying the industry standard for memberships or the industry standard for services?
For the membership Deluxe Pass.
Okay.
The rate.
Okay.
Your point's well taken, though, that this is operating somewhat as a standalone. It's not bound by other district fee structures. It has some autonomy on that. It's just trying to price this in a way that, you know, is capturing the cost effectively, but not pricing itself out of the market.
Because in your model, had you used our existing rates, the operating loss would be even higher.
Right.
Okay. Can you explain on your first-year financial plan, the annual replacement reserve contribution and the unfunded replacement reserve, like there's almost a million dollars there, how that works? I know you touched on it a little bit in your...
Yeah, I'll explain that one, and that is a scary number, but it goes back to our premise that we're trying to build a pay-as-you-go basis where pool tanks last about 10 years, and our principle is that once we replace a pool tank over the next 10 years, we fund the next replacement of it, so that it's pre-funded when a pool tank expires. We looked at, and we're working a little bit in the dark. We don't have a full capital plan and a replacement schedule. That's our best estimate of, had we been doing that, or had the city been doing that all the way along, that's how much money would be sitting in a reserve right now. It's not saying there has to be a check written on day one for that amount, but it's recognition that, given the capital needs that are going to be coming up, there probably is an unfunded reserve.
And when you did the proposal, were you assuming the facility was going to be equipped as-is when you walked in, like all the equipment was going to be there?
I think we kind of put a question mark in on that one. We weren't sure how much equipment would be there versus how much would have to be acquired.
For example, the exercise equipment, our understanding was that those items were leased and that those would potentially go back to the company, and we would have to take...
And are those assumptions in your plan?
I don't think that's in the capital.
Okay, so anything that we would need to completely equip would be outside of this as another expense? Okay.
So I have a question while we're talking about this. Net operating loss. So you're projecting for the fiscal year 1819 that we would, the city, meaning we, has to come up with 226,000 and give that to you. Is that correct? And then it goes down a little bit that next year, but then thereafter, it goes up each year. So I'm wondering, what is the reason why your net operating losses keep going up over the course of the years? It goes from 210 to 216 to 222 to 229 every year. So rather than getting better at what we're doing each year, we're actually going backwards under the net operating loss. And then, that's my first question. Do you see where I'm talking about on yours?
I just see.
I'm not sure there's a good answer to your question, other than in projecting out costs, the costs were rising faster than the operations. You know, I'd like to say that's a worst-case scenario. I don't, I think we've done it as kind of a middle-ground scenario on it, but we're also, we're not trying to hide numbers here.
Mm-hmm. No, I get that.
That's what our projections showed. In a perfect world, we'd be able to beat that, and typically, typically, we outperform our budget. This was what I would probably call our budget numbers.
What would be your closest facility that would be the most similar to the Sherwood? Would that be a Conestoga facility?
Yes.
So can you give us an example of what the net income would be on that one?
I think that was in our packet.
I think the, we don't call it an operating loss, we call it a subsidy, and what's a little difficult is, in our budget process, our maintenance of our facilities and the utility costs and all of that is not included in that facility's budget. If we did include it, I think that it actually would show an operating loss or a tax subsidy for that facility that's similar to these numbers, possibly even higher than these numbers.
And is THPRD subject to PERS at all? Okay, thanks.
But your employees are all under bargaining agreements?
Most of our employees are. We have, yeah, we, most of our staff are under a collective bargaining agreement. Our exempt staff are outside of that.
And then under, this is a silly question, but kind of surprised me. Other maintenance expenses, down below it says, include staff transportation. So where are your staff going that they're incurring additional expenses for?
That was probably used based on what we have in Beaverton, and that some of our facilities are a long way from the admin office, and we have meetings where people come together. So that figure was probably based on that. Sherwood being smaller, there probably wouldn't be as many, although it might be that the center supervisor here would need to go into Beaverton to a center supervisor meeting, a budget meeting, those type of things, so that would be.
Correct me if I read this wrong, but this net loss that we would be subsidizing is the only thing we would be subsidizing. You're not charging a management fee in addition to that?
That's right.
Okay.
The only other would be the potential for revenue sharing if the facility operates.
Right.
And the scholarship.
If we're operating at a loss, you guys benefit how?
I think there's a little bit with, you know, you'll see a small amount of overhead, and it is very small. That probably has some indirect benefit to the district. I'm not sure there's a financial benefit to the district.
No, that surprised me when there was no management fee, so.
Well, and you're not a profit center. You guys aren't in the business to make a bunch of money. So to that end, and I think also to piggyback onto Kim's question, what are your future plans for THPRD and in Sherwood, and how do you see Sherwood fitting into that? Do you see future expansion and maybe the ability to bring us into the district or not, or is it something you just test drive for a year or two and...
It's not, it's not part of this plan at all. This plan is strictly an operational agreement. I think there would be a number of challenges in doing that, you know, location, you know, we're obviously not contiguous. You know, I hesitate ever to speak for future boards and their goals, but I think this is more of a standalone, that we see the value and we think we're good at what we do. We're not the cheapest game in town, obviously, but we see the value in sharing that expertise.
Does THPRD have a desire to expand their boundaries?
We have an existing service boundary, and we apologize for not maybe providing that to you, but if you were able to see this boundary, you'd see that there are a number of properties that are inside that boundary that have annexed to the district, but there's quite a bit that have not yet annexed to the district. So our priority has long been to fill in those holes within our existing service district. So we have a lot that are north of Highway 26, and we have some that are kind of in the south end of the district, and then we do have new urban areas that are developing in North Bethany and South Cooper Mountain. So those have been our primary focus areas for expansion and annexation.
So not the Tiger Tuolton area pushing south?
They're outside of our current service, ultimate service boundary, so a major shift would have to be done to include them in an eventual service boundary.
And then my follow-up question to the net operating loss or tax subsidy is, why is it that we would have to fund 100% of a loss, but we'd have to split a profit? I mean, wouldn't those two be the same?
That is, I think, a question that we would want to discuss with you if we were to move further in this. What we indicated in our application and the RFP was that that would be to-be-determined sort of thing. So that was our offer, that was our proposal, and if we did move forward, that'd be a part of our conversations moving forward.
You talked about in your presentation the sponsorship of scholarships and how you guys fund them, but we would definitely, you know, need something different over here. Do you have any ideas on how? So currently, your plan doesn't assume any scholarships, right?
Not that would be paid for out of THPRD.
Right. Any ideas of how that would work over here?
Well, I know what works for us is having a park foundation that does philanthropic fundraising for that. You know, that would be one option, is to create something like that to fund recreation services for Sherwood residents. It can kind of either be... It can kind of either be done outside of the facility or as, as part of the facility where you try and, you know, get the facility users to help contribute to that, or some combination of that.
Sounds similar to what the Y said their board of managers does, their fundraising and-
Yeah, they have a capital.
Okay.
So first, do you have Silver Sneakers and Silver Fit programs?
Yes, we do.
And so obviously, the insurance company pays for at least a portion of that, but in the case of, say, the existing operator of Y, they provide that, that delta between what it really costs for membership and what the insurance company provides as a scholarship. And so, I would think then, if there's no sponsorship opportunities, that would be something that the city would provide for memberships.
And that is how it works for us. We do cover the balance of those charges. So if we have a 450 day rate and Silver Sneakers provides 350, we're subsidizing that dollar. However, we're operating on sort of a pilot program to allow out-of-district usage of that. So we've opened the door to that and we're analyzing that. We don't know if it's something we would be willing to consider or continue. Certainly, this would be an area we'd see as the city's responsibility for covering that difference. But they are robust programs, many people take advantage of them, and we see great value in allowing those within our facilities.
If I could just clarify, one thing, on page 12, looking at the first-year startup costs, and down in the, down below, it talks about how it does not include fitness equipment. And I believe it kind of spells that out a little bit more on page 17. So just to confirm, those startup costs would not include any type of additional fitness equipment that would need to be supplemented to what perhaps might leave?
Well, I will ask my colleagues to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe the current setup is that the lease is with the YMCA for that equipment, and perhaps that's what we were anticipating, is that it wouldn't be a part of this proposal to you, because those would be lease agreements we would enter into, and they would not be materials that would be left behind if we were no longer operating the facility.
Do you typically lease equipment at your other facilities, or do you purchase?
Typically, purchase.
And what is the turnover, lifespan, maintenance of those? How often do you replace those?
We have an annual replacement program, and our various facilities participate in that program. So we prioritize and triage among the facilities to determine what needs to be replaced. And so we have, I don't know, $40,000 a year-
A year.
-that we use for replacement of equipment in those four different centers.
Is that included in the expenditures that we're seeing here?
That is just for our programs. I don't believe that was reflected in this one.
It is, and there's a $60,000 per year of ongoing replacement. I think that does include equipment as well as facility needs. And the other part of that question, we typically use a five-year replacement schedule for fitness equipment, but we also typically outperform that. We usually get six or seven years.
Generally depends, the ellipticals, they last longer than the treadmills or, and some of the weight machines, we have 10 or 12 years old, so it just depends.
I just wanted to clarify, so I'm still a little confused then. If you assumed that some of the leases were the Y's and that equipment would go away, and that you would have to get some new leases, are those lease payments in this proposal? Are they, are-
That was accommodated for. I apologize, I didn't research or study.
Okay.
But we knew that we were going to have to-
You assumed you were going to just release some stuff?
...either through a lease or purchase.
Okay.
And then I have a question. It looks like you would have every intention of keeping our swim team, correct?
That was, yes, the programmer, programming staff who put that together spoke highly of that particular program.
Okay. You mean the one existing now? Okay. Do you have any other facilities where there's a swim team practicing out of or competing at?
We do. We accommodate all of the Beaverton High Schools in our various facilities. So they're doubled up in some of the facilities, because we don't have as many as schools there are, especially with the new school coming online. So we do have, they are all given the same amount of time at the various pool facilities we have.
We do not employ swim coaches, though.
So they're Beaverton School District-run in our facilities.
Oh, okay. Our high school team that uses it. But we have a-
Well, what about, what about THPRD swim teams and swim coaches?
Those are typically clubs that employ their own-
Affiliates of ours, right.
What do you think would be your transition timeline? Do you think, to transition into the facility, basically, if you're selected? How do you see that going?
Go ahead.
Yeah. As long as possible. Yeah, there's some logistical issues simply, like, accommodate that. You know, I think we were anticipating, you know, up to a year of transition. As I said, everything's on the table in terms of the structure of the agreement, but it's not something that-
Do you anticipate having the facility closed for a certain portion of that?
It would, I think it would be our intention not to, because the most successful means of operations is continuity and as little disruption as possible to that. So that would certainly be our intent, is to make sure that didn't happen.
As part of your budget, did you, to what extent did you include marketing for transfer of it being a-
Transitioning?
Transitioning. Did I say something different?
No, I'm just-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For your facility. From the YMCA.
You mean our marketing efforts, the messaging?
Yes.
Well, we did have a discussion about that, and we largely felt that that needed to be guided by the city and, you know, what your brand vision would be for this new facility. We didn't envision a THPRD logo on this. This is your Sherwood Recreation Facility, so we would want to talk with you about what that would look like and what the messaging and branding would be for this facility.
Is there a person or a point of contact that you would expect to assign to somebody who would be just in charge of getting Sherwood up and running or?
Do you mean in terms of marketing alone, or as a center supervisor?
Overall.
Just running the transition, the transition team? Do you have had discussions about transitioning from one operator to another?
Well, we would, we have our team now that has put together the RFP, so that is, that is our transition team for now. As we moved forward and determined what the staffing would look like and whether the center supervisor would be someone on our existing staff or not, that person we would see as a key player in the transition process.
And we do have experience transitioning from one model to another. Programming always changes. Center supervisors change, bring a different flavor. The neighborhoods change, the demographics change. So our center supervisors are prepared and actually experienced in transitions. Closure for maintenance or just moving programs, taking some out and bringing new ones in.
So how prone are, is THPRD to transitions based on elected officials?
For instance, is the current elected official board, elected board, in favor of THPRD doing something like this in Sherwood?
Well, we have two new out of five board members as of July 1. So this is not something that our two new board members have been engaged in very much. The former five board members were aware of this process. They were supportive of us moving forward and continuing this conversation. But we do have the two new board members that we'd need to bring online as we move through this. And of course, all of this was subject to approval by your board and your council and our board, so we would anticipate that being part of the process.
I have a question on page nine of your proposed staffing plan for initial startup. You have listed some $182,000 in benefits and taxes. Can you explain what benefits you guys have for your employees?
Yeah, we, even though we're not PERS, we have our own retirement plan. It's modeled very much after PERS, so it includes the cost for our retirement plan. It includes health benefits. We provide health benefits to all full-time and regular, part-time employees. That's most of it, and the balance is payroll taxes.
Thank you.
I have a question on your programming. Can you tell us a little about how you meet the needs of your special needs clients? I, when I was, took a tour of the Conestoga facility, they told me a little bit about how you guys do it, and it was different from what I had heard in the past. So would you share some of that with us?
Yes, we have a adaptive and inclusive recreation specialist, who is our district-wide lead on inclusion and specialized recreation. So she is housed in our sports department located on our main campus, and she is the conduit out to all of our centers. She is the one that evaluates requests for inclusion or specialized recreation. She attains the inclusion assistance that then work with the students and participants. Right now, during the summer camps, we typically have an embedded inclusion assistant in those camps.
What does that mean?
That means this is a person that isn't necessarily coming in to provide services to one patron. They're another staff member within a camp that can be a resource to all the kids in that camp. So that's a new model that we've tried in the last few years that we found very successful, because it's really fostering the more inclusion versus one inclusion aide helping a child to participate and stay engaged in the class. So we offer those throughout our programs. We also have a much more intensive program at our Camp Rivendell, and that's where we have kids with more profound challenges, and they have greater medical training up there. And so we also, at our Elsie Stur Center, have a weekly drop-in activity for specialized recreation, and that's for patrons with developmental disabilities. And so they do different things like dances and field trips and things like that. So we have a few different ways that we do this.
Your special needs clients wouldn't necessarily be pigeonholed into a certain number of classes. They can do any class and would get-
Correct. And we will provide the assistance where that's needed.
Okay.
Following up on what you mentioned about the swim team coach not being employee, in your packet on page nine, you do have aquatics coach slash instructor coordinator. So was that just a typo?
No, but we knew that that was the model you were currently using and that it was a positive, so we would actually hire that position.
Oh, I see.
That's an example of where our program is different from your program, and so that was a-
But we knew it was an important piece here.
And speaking of aquatics, it's very clear from our, yeah, I mean, we don't need a feasibility study to tell us that we have a very crowded pool.
Yes.
But my question for you guys are whether or not you would see yourselves as a partner or you, as a professionals in helping the city to evaluate building design and pool expansion, if that's, you know, where that, this process takes us in the future, hopefully sooner than later. But obviously, our building needs to be expanded. And do you have experience, you obviously have experience with building, design, and development from the ground up, but what about expansions?
Yeah, we do. In fact, two, in our most recent bond measure that was passed in 2008, two of the major facility expansions, one was at Conestoga and one was at the Elsie Stur Center. So we've just been through that. We have, we have a design and development department specifically focused on park facilities and athletic facilities and our facilities. You know, all of the staff at the district are available to participate in this. The key premise on this, and I just want to be clear on it, is district taxpayers can't subsidize this operation.
Right, sure.
So anything that happens can be done on a fee-for-service basis, but it is all available.
In keeping with the model that we currently have with our child center, Child Watch, when parents are doing their fitness, they can drop their kids in two hours a day, I'm not exactly sure what it is, for free, is that still the same model you guys were anticipating in your proposal?
And then, I was curious about this program that you have called Thrive After-School Program. Can you tell us about that a little bit?
After-school programs at our recreation facilities are very popular, and we have a great deal of success. We serve a large number of children, and we provide a service to working parents in the area. It's something we have a lot of experience in and we know is generally needed in the community. It also brings in a substantial revenue stream. So this is an after-school program modeled after some that we do, and it's, either we pick up the children with bands and transport them to the center. We participate in a federal lunch program so that we actually feed them what's considered a supper, and then provide enrichment activities for them, and that runs until 6:00, 6:15 in the evening.
And what is the age group of those children that you're servicing?
We do from first grade through junior high.
Okay. Because we have a teen center.
Right.
And I didn't know how much you had incorporated your proposal into what is offered at the teen center. And it's kind of a combination of intermixed classes being moved over there and being held, and some teenager-type activities as well.
We also knew in looking at your programming that you did have that, and we would want to keep that model as well, but it's actually very different than the after-school programs, which are very structured, staffed at pretty concentrated levels, and has a curriculum that we actually go through through the year.
Is that something that can be implemented over here?
I would think so.
A program like that?
If there was a community need and demand.
Although, it sounds like the program sort of ends when they hit the teenage year.
Right, where now our teens can come for free and hang out after school. They do get bused there, yeah.
But there are a number, a lot of parents who want to make sure that their junior-high, middle-school-aged child has something structured to do and isn't dependent on just dropping in and staying if they want to.
Through age 13 or 14.
We also have found that that is just a great conduit to some of our young volunteers. You get them through the junior high, then they turn into what we call light volunteers, which is leaders in training. They volunteer in our summer programs and in our classrooms for a certain amount of time, and then they're eligible for employment.
Another question. Currently, our YMCA, when they close on Sundays, they open their doors for our homeless friends to come in and shower. They eat dinner at a church locally, and they come over to showers and maybe laundry, I'm not exactly sure. Would that be something that could still be offered through?
I would think if that's a priority with the council, it certainly couldn't, I, we didn't plan on being closed on Sundays.
They close at like 6:00, I think.
Oh, okay.
And then, a couple hours in the evening, somebody, I think, one or two staff members there.
That's a priority with the council and the community. I don't see why that couldn't be accommodated.
You guys have some more? Are we about finished?
I have a question now.
Oh, I have a question. You're using NeoGov? I think we're about to use NeoGov at our facility. I'm wondering how, if that would be a, if it's NeoGov 1.2, or is it NeoGov 2.1? I mean-
I wish I do.
Is there an opportunity there for some synchronicity?
I don't know how the licensing on that works, to be honest. Certainly, it would be for any staffing on this facility. I don't know.
Okay.
We love it. It's been, it's been great, and we keep expanding our use of it.
Yeah, there's different add-ons you can buy, and I can't remember the last one we added, but it has worked very well for us. I think it was onboarding.
Over onboarding, okay.
So one additional question, I guess, from me is, in your proposal on page five, you talked about that there would be a full-time center supervisor, and perhaps getting ahead of the game here a little bit, were you to take over the facility? Would your plans be to bring in an existing supervisor to begin at this facility, hire in a new facility? It kind of goes to that transition a little bit again. It seems to be a critical position.
I, my thought going into this was certainly that, rather than hire someone brand-new to our organization, we would be more interested in transferring an existing THPRD, PhD, my goodness, what organization do I reference? THPRD staff member. There would be some interest, because there's certain processes and procedures that this person would already be privy to, so the learning curve would be a lot less. But what you said earlier, one of you, about the existing staff and would there be an opportunity for existing staff to come in, that is potentially also a benefit, knowing that facility could be a benefit to us. So as Keith mentioned, we would likely conduct an open recruitment, and certainly, existing staff would be encouraged to apply. And as Deb said, that person could potentially have a leg up, knowing how that facility operates. operates. But there'd definitely be that decision point we'd need to make between someone who has the facility experience but worked under another management structure, and then someone who's in-house. So we'd, we'd have to kind of get there when we get there, but that's, that's what I'd say now.
Okay, so one other...
Comment slash question is, Sherwood is very community-oriented, and very strongly so, and the current facility, as it's operated, Y, the YMCA is a real hub. So the people that work there in terms of getting a leg up, as you say, on, on new positions, not just because they know the building and its operations, but they know the people, and they know the, the kids that are swimming, and they know, and that, that is equally, if not more so, important in this community than, I mean, you'd want to know what the operations are, obviously, but it's as equally as important. What kinds of community outreach and those types of programs do you have to bring the community together? What kinds of things do you do throughout the year at your facilities that would kind of foster strong community?
Well, coming up, we do have our summer concert series. We do, I think, four different summer concerts. We have, we had one last week that was also a park dedication, so it was a new park that was constructed with a splash pad, and so we had hundreds of people out celebrating and, and welcoming this new park to our portfolio. We also do a theater in the park, and that's going to be behind our Elsie Stur Center in the park there this year. We do a big truck day at Conestoga. You may have heard the horns from here. But we, we do that, and that's very well-attended. The party in the park, which is coming up on the 29th, is a free event for all of our citizens to come participate. So that's sort of what we do. We do fall festivals at our rec centers. We have a Harvest Bazaar at the Elsie Stur Center, which is a fundraiser. People donate products, and they're cared for, cleaned up, and priced by our volunteers at the center, and then those are sold, and the proceeds go back to help support the center. So we, we do a number of things throughout the year. Dive-in movies, or we're playing movies in our pools. So lots and lots of different things to try and attract lots of folks.
You know, we talked a little bit about governance and also fundraising for the scholarship. One of the things, we have a two-tier volunteer group. We have advisory committees that really, they're arms of our board of directors that, that look at functional issues for the district. Like we have a Trails and Natural Resources Advisory Committee and a Programs Advantage Advisory Committee. We also have friends groups, and they tend to be a little more facility-based, and in some cases, they provide that community. They do fundraising for things at the facilities and help promote facility needs or, or, or other things. And then also, that, I think, is a model that could be applied that would also provide some of that community advantage-type activity that you...
We also are always looking for input from what we call patrons, to see what they want and what services they ask. So we do go to community events with, the city of Beaverton has their own concert series or picnics in the park. We set up booths, we do surveys, we do interactive, you know, exercises to see what it is that people are looking for, tell them a lot about what we are doing. Individual recreation centers do it differently. One of our recreation centers sends out surveys to their patrons electronically three or four times a year. So we know we do our best work if we're doing what the community wants, and so we have a number of tactics. We have Patron Appreciation Day where we hand out small refreshments and treats. It's another way we gather information, ask them what they're participating in, what they like, what they'd like to see.
Do you anticipate that those committees would also include Sherwood, or we would need to have our own committees that manage that facility?
I think probably the, the simple answer is, is this facility would have its own friends group, and that's a starting place for it. You know, our advisory committees are really about residents and the district board, and I don't know that we'd want overlap there, but I think as a standalone friends group for this facility would be the perfect.
And then you'd be hearing specifically what Sherwood residents want versus having it kind of mixed in with Beaverton residents.
I have a question. I found the document I was looking for. It was document 15, the Conestoga Recreation Aquatic Center Operational Performance. I think you touched on this a little bit, where this shows Conestoga operating at a loss each, each year. And so since the proposal you gave us assumes a loss every year for five years, and you've modeled our current model the best you could, I, do you anticipate ever, or anything that can be done to make it 100% recovery where we wouldn't be having a loss or, or subs... or subsidy?
That's a balancing point, because one of the things we've done in this proposal is, you know, there's clearly a strong community benefit aspect to what's, what's going on at the center right now, and we tried to retain that. To, to improve the financial operations, you have to lose some of that, and that's...
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And across park and rec facilities, managing an aquatic facility rarely is profitable, and it's, it's just a matter of how much money it is going to cost you. There are some in the Midwest that have big water parks that go with them that can subsidize an actual pool, but it, it is very difficult to get a rec aquatic center so that it is affordable.
It's a benefit to the community. It's not an asset to the community.
Right, right.
It's an asset. You're just not the one that makes money.
Well, the building is the asset, right? Nothing in it really is the asset.
Correct.
All right, last call. Anyone else?
I've exhausted mine.
You're exhausted or you've exhausted?
I've exhausted my questions. I appreciate you guys coming out. I know it wasn't a long drive, but it's a drive through the hills and cities and towns. So we appreciate you taking the time to come.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
And if we have any follow-up questions, then somebody will email those to you so that we can get some answers to them. I know that the mayor may have a few when she watches the video back, so you'll can watch for that email and otherwise.
Perfect.
Would you leave a copy of this presentation with city staff?
Okay, awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, and for the rest of the room, we're going to take a short break, and we will resume another work session as we continue on with our evening. Thank you.